The next item is the facilities. The update on the facilities master plan budget. FGM has completed the schematic design of the facilities master plan at this point. The construction team consisting of OPRF High School Operations, FGM and Pepper Construction have updated the budget. The presentation to follow this item is for information and discussion only. No action is needed. This is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four, Facilities and Finance, and District Policy Four, colon, one fifty. Gentlemen?
Good evening. Wow, what a tough act to follow. I guarantee this is not going to be as every committee, or as I mean, I should be saying. Okay. So this is another, another chapter in our ongoing updates to the board. We're giving an update this evening on our budget. And as soon as I figure out why this is so clean, I will bring it up.
While you're doing that, Mr. Raven, did you mean to leave your picture?
Oh, maybe, no, I didn't.
I just didn't know. How was their picture everything?
I know, I'm taking that home.
It's more of him out. Thank you.
Gentlemen, help me out there. I'll try to bring this up.
Let's have it.
Yes.
That is saying, we really don't want me to.
Okay. So from a summary point of view, as I mentioned, this is another update. We are in the process, this continuing process, we wanted to take a time, basically a snapshot at this point, and let you know where we were with respect to the budget. We actually, I'll go through some of the details of the top line level. We're still sitting at about three million dollars over our budget within, that's roughly around a five and quarter percent overage. And we feel comfortable given some of the contingency monies that are built in, and some of the work that we're doing, that that's a reasonable number that we feel that we can come in under budget. However, in order to get there, we had to make some tough decisions in terms of the scope of the project. We're still operating under the assumption that we're limited on the magic factor of thirty-two point six million that was approved, and four million per year in the capital expenditures, in addition to five point one of the health life safety. That's all built in, and I'll go through that all in detail. So the two items that are listed as alternates, alternates meaning they're pulled out of the budget, but they're still there, and they've got that, we're going to look to see how the bids come in, and based upon how the bids come in, they still could be accepted, or a portion of them could be accepted. One of the alternates was a serveri, which was never really included in the magic budget. So as we got into the project, we saw that we're doing a brand new cafeteria, but we have this old serveri. So basically, we go get your food is, it's okay, but it's comparable, we build a new cafeteria around it, it's not going to look okay. And it is needing some repair. So that's one item. So we basically, we put it in, and then we pulled it out as an alternate, because we didn't have the budget to support that. And then the second thing we had to do, we talked about this along the way, but we felt at this point in time, this was the time to do it, is we took twenty-five percent of the classrooms out of the project. So we originally said we were going to do seventy-six was the number. Twelve of those seventy-six are the infill classrooms, as we pulled the items out of the second and third floor in the north side of the building, and moved up to the Student Resource Center. Tutoring center, major space, libraries, those spaces leave out twelve classrooms, we'll infill those spaces. Those are still in, we've got to do those, we need those classrooms, basically to run the school. Of the others, those are all renovations, so that would be around sixty remaining of those, sorry, sixty-four remaining. Of those sixty-four, this is roughly fourteen, fifteen of those being pulled out of school. So they're basically sitting there as an alternate. We chose those items because we could always come back and put those in either in a later phase, or depending on how the bids come in, we could actually include them in the space of the project. But we need to pull that money out in order to be able to be within strength in this business of our budget. Okay? So that's the summary. Are there any questions before I delve into the detail?
Just one.
Sure.
What's the, you said you, I tried to find, I know you told us in the past, I couldn't find the number, what is your open design, construction contingency amount?
The amount? Well, I don't.
And you told us in the past, and I couldn't find that one.
Yeah, we actually, we actually did answer that question. I'm trying to remember the number, what is it, about three point one?
Something like that. Generically, it's currently, we're carrying ten percent design contingency and five percent construction contingency?
I recall the number being around three million. It's basically, three point one, it's basically this number.
Right.
So that's why we're feeling pretty comfortable if we're in, but, but this is.
But we're at it then. We're basically at it.
Pretty much, but, but there's still, as you know, we've still got some bouncing around, that's why they have.
You will discover things as the project goes on.
Yes. So we're right at the very beginning, so, well, we're feeling okay moving forward at this point.
So I got a question, maybe you'll perhaps address this, so, please do that, but, so the alternate now of about fifteen classrooms, so what's the ramifications for that? I mean, like, what, how are we going to do without those? Does that mean we're not going to, so?
They're still, they're still there. They just won't be renovated.
Okay.
So it's just decreasing the number. So these are all existing, the ones that are remaining that were slated for renovation would still be there, and we would, obviously, as we move forward, if we find we have funding, we would pull those back in the school.
Is the idea to maybe certain departments, you know, in terms of prioritization of which ones?
Honestly, we haven't gotten that far yet. This is really at a pretty high level. We haven't gotten it, as we get into the design, and we look at how things are, one of the other criteria we had was to try to do a reshuffling of departments, so that people weren't scattered all over the place. So as we do that, that, that might play out in terms of that analysis.
Yep. And we have just under two point six million in construction contingency, and just over three point one million in design contingency.
So that was the number at every point.
Okay.
So that's a total of six million. Red the eye.
Okay. So I restated the vision which we want to keep in mind, because it's really important for us to reconsider, is we really want to make sure we keep our eye on ball in terms of student learning at the center, that's really what we're about. Attention to equity, and a rigorous needs-driven versus a wants-driven process. Okay? This evening, I'll take you through the budget, and in the next steps, I'll very briefly talk about what we're doing next month. Okay, so just to reiterate, we've seen this before, there's nothing new here. We're trying to remind everyone of our starting point. So everything we're quoting against now is from the original estimate that was done on the magic project. And so that's really our baseline. Where the thirty-two point six million came from. So we have the difference in the amount of contingency that was built into that estimate versus the amount of contingency we're covering right now. So it's a difference of about three percent there. They estimated twelve, we're carrying fifteen. Number two, there was a discrepancy in the square footage calculation for the Student Resource Center's health cafeteria between what was actually in their calculations and what our actual square footage is. So that accounts for a portion of the difference. Number three is, they estimated the footprint of that self cafeteria and Student Resource Center as fifty percent renovation and fifty percent new construction. The assumption being that somehow you're going to be able to maintain a portion of the existing structure and renovate and build on top of it. That is not doable, given, given some of the criteria we went through. It's going to be one hundred percent new construction, a demolition and new construction. Number four, there was a matter of an elevator that was not included in that Student Resource Center. There was an elevator included, but was included in the north side of the building. That elevator is still in our estimate. In addition, there is an elevator in the Student Resource Center, which was essential, and you've got to have one, you can't be going to one of the building to come off and then come over that. Anyway, that's, that's it. And then number five, in, there were, in many, in many places, the estimates did not include enough mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. So even though the estimates were there, the numbers that were in there for the infrastructure to support those estimates, were not sufficient to be able to support what was going into those spaces. So now, we basically, our, our estimates take all of these things into consideration.
What drove, what drove the, at a high level, do you have an understanding?
Just into your mic.
So imagine made an assumption around fifty fifty in terms of new renovation and new construction. There must have been a basis for that, of which something has changed for it to be a hundred percent new. Any idea what fundamentally has changed? Is there something in the design that's driving it?
We, I'll be honest, we didn't, we didn't talk to them about it. We actually talked to, not the architects, we actually talked to some of the folks, and they just assumed that they were going to be able to build, to maintain some of the structure. But we were scratching our heads, we didn't, we didn't understand where that came from. So I don't have a good answer for you, Greg, I'm sorry. I really don't know what, what drove them to that assumption.
Good. It's speculative, I would say.
Yeah, and if you'd like, I think I could go back and try to figure it out.
I'm, I'm just wondering to extend, you know, how much of the, did we upgrade the design at some point, well beyond what they thought? And of course, have to come to a conclusion that we have to build it.
Yeah, I wish, I don't know if you can speak to it, Josh, or if you can speak to it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess one thing, like you said, we can speculate on everything. I do know underneath cafeteria, you guys do have bad soils that need to come out, so I don't know if the thought was early on that, hey, we'll just go right on top of the existing cafeteria now that we're nursing, that it couldn't support doing that if that's, if that's a piece of it. I mean, there is one thing, obviously, that early on in the process, you just make a lot of assumptions without looking into it. So I mean, there's a lot of things that just could have been like, hey, it's an existing cafeteria, why couldn't we go two floors on top of it without looking into it? More thinking, as we get into the design, we'll figure out where we have to go, and it just didn't, it just didn't make it to that process or that step.
Right. Seems like a pretty big miss in terms of, it's a pretty big assumption. Okay.
If I might, this, because of the level of work of the Imagine Group, in my understanding, even if FGM was not the firm doing the work, we still may have run into this when it was time to really do the design work, to do the construction. And so there are some times, I think Ralph said it earlier, that when you're working, you uncover things that are not anticipated that increase the cost. I'm, I would be surprised that, and it may not be there, because it ate at a building, and when you go way down under there, there may be some drums under there from past oil, I don't know if it's on that end of the building. But in, in my experience, we've had where we uncovered something and found stuff we had never anticipated, so in not knowing that, and making that earlier assumption, regardless of, that's, obviously, it still could have started at some point in time.
Your assumptions could have been reasonable with what they do. The assumptions could have been reasonable, given what they do, and then once you dig in, you find out. I mean, my question, I had a similar question on that one, so you asked that one, was on the mechanicals. What drove that, the additional mechanical stuff? Was that just stuff you discovered? Was that some life safety that came up?
No, we just, well, again, I don't know if you want to speak to that, Josh, in terms of the differences that we saw in the estimate, so what we estimated.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it is the two big areas in your estimate. The two big areas in your estimate being the cafeteria and the commons are now the two areas that we are the most, that we are the product along in the design. So it's just a lot of understanding more about the project and the systems, and how it comes together. You know, more questions, more answers, more of those pieces, that things are just turning into be a little different than what they're doing. And truthfully, part of it is, we're still trying to figure stuff out as it goes, you know? Do we need to do this? Can we maybe do this? It's kind of right now, what we're trying to do is, we kind of have uncovered, looking at kind of what's the worst case as we still uncover items and investigate more, so.
And I know, in some cases, I'm not sure if this is the exact answer, but the assumptions were made based upon square footage, and what type of things were going into those spaces. And now this is the actuality, the reality of the building, this is the space, this is what's going on, this is how it's being fed by the existing infrastructure, what has to change to make that happen? So a square footage, rough estimate at a top level, clearly in these spaces, was inadequate to really cover the costs, and what you need to do to make it work, so.
What's your estimate base at this point? Is it, obviously, initially, it was based on square footage and ratios. Now, where are we in terms of, are you at structural drawings, your consumables estimated, what, where is this process?
So, so the cafeteria, I believe what FGM is saying that they're at is, we were at the design development stage. I know that doesn't mean a lot to everyone, there's still more to go. The next step would be construction documents, which we would be bidding. There's a lot less assumptions now being made in your cafeteria and SRC. The commons and main entrance area, that's a little past your schematic design, which is a step before, and everything else is currently kind of in your conceptual, where we're still, you know, you look at classrooms, it's kind of square foot pricing, you know, hey, we think this will be a major renovation, this will be minor. So a lot, like I said, the cafeteria, SRC, that's our next thing to bid, and then we'll start to be looking at items that we'll be doing in the summer of twenty-one, that those will eventually kind of get more developed. So the farther along everything gets, the more updated the budget gets for each of the items. But right now, outside of the cafeteria and, and commons, it's all just conceptual at this point.
Okay, so the cafeteria and the commons, they would have, they're, they're ready to bid, so they're out with mechanical drawings and stuff? I'm just trying to understand where we are.
Yeah, so, so the cafeteria and SRC, that's the next thing we bid. Because we're, we're planning to start in the summer, it's bidding in phases. So in February, we're going out to bid for the demolition and knock it down. So that'll be the first piece. Then in March, kind of throughout this whole process, FGM will continue to develop and AMSCO develop the drawings more. In March, we'll be going out to bid for the excavation, concrete, steel. April, we'll go out to bid for all of the MEPs and the elevator, and then kind of May, June is when we'll do everything else with the finishes. So it kind of allows those drawings to get, to kind of get themselves caught up, as well as allow us to start construction.
Okay. So they have a pretty good idea of sort of tons of concrete, heated pipe, or some construction?
Pepper does, kind of, we had an idea, yes, but, you know, we have, we have documents, we have our experience, we talk with other, you know, based on the size of the building, what is to carry, and obviously, that will get developed. Hence, though, that's why we currently carry the design and construction contingency, because we don't know everything, and that kind of allows some new items to kind of get themselves caught up in.
And the Resource Center relative to the classroom, what relative amount of the budget that you have got at that phase now? Is it half fifty fifty? Or is it seventy thirty? You see what I'm asking? I'm trying to understand your contingency number, is where I'm going.
Yeah, well, so realistically, once we open an award, construction contingency will most likely stay the same at five percent where it's at. The design contingency, what that is, is there's just so many things that are out there, you know, we're meeting with different departments, they have needs, wants, things that we have to have, that we might not have had in the budget. So instead of every month, you come back saying, hey, now we went up, now we went up, that's kind of helping you get to that point. So the design contingency, it's more of a part, after the DD sets, when you look at the SRC and cafeteria, the next round, which it kind of ties into bidding, that design contingency starts to go down. So you look at where we're at now, once we open bids, your design contingency is zero, that's gone. It's just kind of as you go through there, and it's more of a team decision, I mean, where do we truly think we're at? And how much more do we have to get to, and where are we comfortable? You know, it's one thing to say we're knocking the building down and we're bidding that in February, what percentage is left? So you're, it's, it's more of a gut feeling on when you can, when you start to drop it, but you kind of go with big numbers. So we'll go from ten to five to eventually zero. You know, we're, you don't go six, seven, that kind of, but, yeah. But kind of after, after demo, and probably as I'm bidding excavation, we're working on our next budget, that would most likely drop down to five. And then, like I said, as we get closer to the summer, you'll be at zero.
Good. Thank you.
But that's, you know, I mean, that's kind of how you do it, as you, as you know more, your design contingency will drop.
So I want to apologize. This is not Lance Trich from Pepper, this is Josh Warner. I had, I had the wrong name, I took this from the first presentation we did, so Josh is the one who's going to talk to you, not Lance. Lance begged out this evening, so I just want to make sure we're clear about that. If there's something you don't like, we'll bring Lance.
Right. It's not Josh's turn yet either, so.
No, it is right. We're two Josh's, you know.
Very concerned. So the variance that we're talking about, and those are the words that they use, somebody says, oh, it's overruns, or the estimate, you know, and I know that the more we go in, the more, but how much of an implication is this for future phases? How much can we read into, I guess it'd be like, phase two, three, and so on?
You can't. You can't. We're going to, we're going to manage, we're going to manage to this budget. And there are some letters we're calling, and you're actually going to see that as I go through this. So the one thing I will tell you I'm very concerned about in terms of future implications is, because we have a bumbling, health life safety is sort of its own animal, so let's just set that to the side. You levy into that, and there's certain work that has to be approved by the state that you have to do. So that's going to, that'll happen on its own, and it's, but then it's all budget, we'll manage to that. But those dollars are really kind of segregated, they're, we bid them together because then you get better, better bids and so forth, but that, put that aside. The capital improvements, which is actually, if you look at this in pager, it's under additional project scope, under C twenty at the bottom. We've basically, I'm sorry, I went too far down, it's actually CXX is the number I want to talk about first. That is the four million dollars a year for four years, okay? So you can see that's showing actually under budget, so we're managing to that number in order to get the scope in, to do the things we need to do to take these, I'll call them misses, to take these things that we're discovering and manage to them so we can do the project one scope appropriately. Okay, so there's a little bit of, we're playing a little bit here with that capital improvement, not the, we're, it's going to come home, we're basically mortgaging the future in a way, right? Because what's happening is you now have this list of capital improvements, which we're working on the tenure plan, we've got a very good start on that, we listen, we just can't do everything at once, but we've got a very good list of.
But it's the right process, you guys are going down a good process.
And, but what we're seeing, if you start, when you start to add up all of these things that still have to be done, the sports fields, the stadium, those things are going to have to be done at some point in time. So as we manage to this, which is the appropriate thing to do, those things are, you know, something comes up that's a big item, we have to now look at taking some of that other money and pushing it off to the future. So that's really the main thing. We are going to, our approach is to manage to the scope of what was promised in the project one document. I mean, I think that's the approach.
Once you manage to the scope, you think in terms of the dollar figure?
The dollar figure, but, but to, to the extent that the things that were promised, now maybe not the number of classrooms, but, but certainly the classrooms are big. So rather than saying, well, we're not going to do the all gender restroom, so we're going to, we're not going to move, take care of special education, or we're going to diminish what, and, and some of these are pretty big things, right? So you can't really break them apart.
Right. And one thing I've noticed is the elevator is about half a million dollars, and that's a new, you know, element, that's around five classrooms, based on my rudimentary math looking at.
No, that's, that's, that's pretty, pretty close, but the elevator is really, even though it's showing five hundred thousand down there, it's actually included in the capital improvements budget. That's what I'm saying.
Absolutely. And it was going to.
We're manipulating some of these in order, it'll all come out in the wash when we do an accounting by project, but in terms of trying to manage the entire budget, we're trying to juggle this in a way where we really can deliver, thirty-two point six million, we can deliver that, that, as much of that scope as is reasonable. Now, things like the serveri, which were never included, I don't know what to tell you. And I guess we can, we can talk about that. If that's something which we feel we need to, we really want to do, that we'll go take some of our money from the capital improvements to fund that, which means you're pushing other things out.
Right. One of the, I just feel compelled to say this, one of the reasons we find ourselves here is one of the things we kind of tried not to do when there was a push to give cost, because we were given the estimates, for lack of a better word, and so, once you start to, to really get in the fine tuning of design and start to come up with some real costs, that oftentimes, it's not within the scope of that estimate. And so now we find ourselves with a budget that was projected and trying now to manage within the scope of that as we do the actual design. So when you answer the question about future projects, that's why I tell them.
Yeah. It's a further along in the, in the game, so to speak, to know you know the outcome, right, versus beforehand. So just as earlier, I was hearing from Josh, that contingency equals, right, sort of being as conservative as we can, so that's getting closer to, you know, increase the certainty, lessen the, or that.
All right. You look at like classrooms, you know, we're kind of doing finishes, but as we get into that, you know, you need market, you know, things you might need, so instead of coming back and saying, well, now it's ax, you know, you had to consume some of it as you have more.
By, given this, I, the phase one aspects, I am thinking about, overall, you know, it's not an infinite well of resources, but that there are, you know, it's an old building, and living in this old house has let me know that you just peel back something, and it was built, I was eighteen eighty-seven, so, you know, there are people that don't even know now what things are. So how do we ensure that we are keeping to our priorities as well as dealing with contingencies? Because even, you know, Josh, what you were saying about classrooms, it's an old building, so there may be some wall that says it's one thing, and if I were more well-versed, I could have more words in this.
No, and that's why, like I said, we currently have ten percent design, five percent construction contingency. The day we open bids and we come here to say, here's the bid, we will still have five percent contingency. We will go, the plan is, we will go into construction with that number, only design is going to go up and down as we develop. So we'll always carry that, that construction contingency for the exact reasons you are saying. Every wall you open, you run into something you weren't expecting. So we have to have that planned in place, even when we don't know what it's going to account for.
Okay. I'm doing those with, thank you. Fred?
The five percent number is a pretty standard number.
No, I understand that piece. I, and really understand that piece, I am, I guess, looking from the shop all of us had with the initial fifty percent, you know, with the cafeteria, and now that's a hundred percent, and just thinking about the work that needs to be done, that is phase two work, and, you know, how are we ensuring that we're managing needs, handling all of the safety issues in particular, but also being kind of faithful to the process of what our design is supposed to look like?
We are actually having conversations now about how to fund phase two. And as the board recalls, we said we would come in May with a funding plan. We're still planning to do that.
You may come in May?
We're still planning to come in May with a level of funding for phase two, which is what we said we would do, but right now, it's going to be a little bit difficult. But that's, we're going to come with something. If memory serves me, it was a certain percentage from capital campaign, the twenty million that the district had already earmarked for phase two, this gives us thirty, and then a means of how we could do some additional funding. And so we're, we're actually looking into that now, so that at least there's something to say, there's something for phase two, it's just the amount of this.
And I think just for transparency purposes, with the larger community being able to, you know, because it is a very complex conversation that, you know.
And it will be a plan of how to get to that point. It will be here, here is, that's how we want to get there.
So I guess I So I guess I just wanted to make a comment, which was, actually, I really appreciate the hard work and the process to help us manage the intent of scope correctly to an intent of, to a number that we've committed to. But I guess I would also like to know, as we get closer, at what point, and you don't know tonight, but at what point, when you put an option out there, if we're kicking too many things down the, you know, down the road, at some point, we have to fess up and say, it's not thirty-two million dollars anymore, it's really thirty-six. I'm just making that up. But I don't want to just kick everything down the road to get to thirty-two, but I do want a good process to try to manage our scope. All right? So that's why, I like the way we're doing it to manage our scope, but at some point, I still would like the decision on the table that says if we need to add ten more classrooms because it's the right thing to do, that that is brought before us as an option for us to say yes or no to.
And that's what I was alluding to, or trying to say with the prioritizing, to ensure that nothing pops off or that it comes back as well, you know? Because you all are the experts, and making sure that the communication is clear, that the priorities are there, what we need to understand that process. So, thank you.
So to give a partial answer, the ten-year enrolling plan is integral to that decision making. So we are just putting the finishing touches on that, and what we have to do now is overlay this plan, project two projected, whatever that might look like, that, or really that's work in terms of what it might look like, where it might be approved and move forward, and then see what that looks like, and have a better sense of what the funding is. But I can tell you, early read is, it's not a pretty sight, especially with respect to the fact that we were already behind on our ten-year maintenance plan, which we were probably seven years into it and weren't even fifty percent done with. And it's looking even worse than that, because I'm not sure how accurate that ten-year plan was. And again, if it's not rolling, it's like, okay, it's a point in time, and once your year two passes, how meaningful is it? So the idea is to develop that, to get a complete list, and then to keep it fresh, right? To just keep revisiting it, and then make those decisions as you apply them to the work that we've now committed to do here. So not quite ready yet, but I think we're probably pretty close to come to you with that.
And I can just echo what Craig said. I know I don't do a straw poll on whether we increase the budget or not, but what he said rings true to me, too, that I'd rather, I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish for the sake of some kind of whim that really is, you know, and this phase is, I think, the least extensive or expensive phase. So if we're going to stretch a budget or increase our spending anywhere this way, I want us to get off the right foot. So, you know, just wanted to, was my own individual view of that.
And the plan is a couple of twenty-five percent classrooms, the surgery, those are, when we say alternate, truly an alternate. Like if the surgery gets bid with the cafeteria project, it's not necessarily we'll decide if we're even going to bid it at all based on, it'll be bid, you'll have the number to make a decision, whether it's project one funding a different project, that those numbers will be presented with the project it's associated with, not the one.
Thank you.
So I'm fully prepared to go into detail on each of these line items if you'd like me to. I'll leave it up to the board. Just to give you an idea of what you're seeing here, the first column, obviously, is the description. We took the major component parts off project one. That's the A's, the A O one through A O seven. Those are really the project one components. You can see a subtotal of P one down over eight beneath A O seven. That's your thirty-two point six million. That's the number that we're managing to there. And then CXX, that's the capital improvements. There's my cursor. That's the number I'm talking about there. That's your four years at four million per year. Health life safety, you see that showing zero variance, because right now we're not far enough into it to know, we're just assuming we're going to be able to do it for the roughly five, five million dollars. And then we subtotaled those. And then, not to forget, because we did last month approve the capital improvements for this year, and we were about six hundred thousand over that budget, and the question was asked, how are we going to handle that? Well, that's baked into this budget also. So that, that over due to the roof has to now be absorbed in this budget. So that's reflected here, too. And just so you know, obviously, so you then have your original, what was put in the project one, you have the current estimate as of the eighth of, actually, as of right now, pretty much. And then this variance column, obviously, is the variance that you're seeing. And this column here, which doesn't have a label, these numbers reflect the issues on the previous page. So if you're looking for where the variance, you know, the impact of those, this is the item on the previous page that reflects what some of these are. Now, some, in some cases, you're under budget. So, you know, even, but there is that factor, right? So that is part of it. And then there are some notes there. Okay? Did you want me to go through this in more detail, or what do you think?
I think that was very less difficult.
That was detailed.
Okay. No, I, okay, I'm going to just move on. So we're back to next month, because we really love it, and I know you love hearing us every month. We're going to come back next month with the accessibility report that we had commissioned at the end of last year, and we'll basically give you some sense of what's happening with that. We'll basically, we'll be back then March or so with the timeline. In April, we'll have the bid awards, we'll actually have some more detail on the budget, obviously, because we'll know where the bids came in at, and we'll give you a better sense of where things are lying at that point. And they'll be on that, so three months, that's where we may be going. Other questions? Alex?
Hi. No. Jackie's comments about priorities and trade-off is how we just continue to understand that. So as I, you know, going back to the numbers, obviously, you know, cafeteria is the big gorilla in the room at four million dollars over. So what's in that that we're, you know, by doing that, we're saying we need to do versus what we are then saying we not don't need to do? So continuing to be able to understand what the decision making is and pushing it forward, and what those columns look like are credible to me.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the next item is the Board of Advocations Discussion Article Three. This month's chapter was chapter eleven. Previously, the board read chapters one through three. And then an article was also sent to the board to read yesterday. This is in compliance with strategic plan, and it is also in compliance with the board's goal, goal one.
Okay. So, this was like the, the desire here was to connect all of the pieces from the information sessions that we've been, have worked done in the fall for the breaking of restructuring, the, our goal of working towards having a better understanding of our racial equity policy and as a board, how we fit into that narrative. And also, as we talked about, one of our board goals in terms of our training and education, modeling these types of conversations for our broader community. And so, the, I will just say, as a little bit of background, that the first time I presented this book to our district predates Dr. Pruitt Adams and all of our current administrative staff, and it was in a desire when we first started talking about, my first year on board, talking about racial equity and being able to talk about excellence and high expectations for our students. And so courageous leadership is certainly one aspect of this. And a couple of takeaways for me, as this chapter talked about the pre-work that was done, and I know we've heard a lot from our community about what's the evidence that is driving this decision, and there's a lot of work that is happening, has happened in the last year. But there's also, and I'm not sure every board member has taken the opportunity to read it, but in two thousand and three, there was a report done at this high school by a consortium of researchers and staff and community members. It was headed by Carl Spite, Dr. Carl Spite, and it's called the Learning Performance Gap. And I have said this in over my now six and a half years on the board, or seven, that is, that is the blueprint. It gives the background, it tells you the, you know, the interviews, the evidence-based practices, what's going on. So with this chapter focusing on equity propelled us from good to great in the school district in Pennsylvania, I would just like to hear your reflections on what resonated, and especially, you know, what we heard from our students and staff today, as well as the article that Ralph and I had a pizzened moment of, you know, this is also something to put forward. So I did want us to be able to have a bit of a discussion about the high expectations that we're talking about, and what this school district did, and how it is reflected in the work that we see our district doing. And it's still early.
Yeah. So I think, I'm going to speak for myself, but I believe that everyone on the board would agree with this. We don't, I don't want to be involved in an equity initiative, I want to be involved in a successful equity initiative. I think my understanding after reading you all is, you're focused on the end game result, which is where we need to be as a board, that's the job. What I like about the Abington case study, and this is when we talked about it, D ninety-two, when we were going through our equity process and we went through this book, is that it put in place the framework that is the proven framework for changing the system. And this is the thing that we are, I think, coalescing around now as a board, right? So they had measurable outcomes that they set that the board propelled them to. They looked at evidence-based practices on everything from professional development to pedagogy. They dealt with the community pushback they knew they would get in a positive and welcoming way, but they stayed on task. And I think, you know, those are the elements. And now we're at a juncture, I think, where we need to start, we said we're going to be doing this, and we're in the process of doing this, you know, setting those measurable outcomes with the administration, and then assuming our role of making sure that whatever happens to change our system is evidence-based and is, or is working as intended, and that we are communicating it well with those who have concerns that maybe what we're doing either backs away from being rigorous academically, or all the misconceptions that are out there that are frequently raised against an equity initiative. So I like that it encapsulated all that stuff. And if you looked at the demographics of the district, which I did, very similar to our demographics, and I liked that. And, you know, their gaps that they dealt with and closed were similar to our gaps. So there is a lot, there's a lot of nice symmetry there, so we could look at this Abington example and say, if you do it the right way, if you incorporate the blah, 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 all the things that you said, you have a reasonable expectation of being successful in the long term, and that's really the end game, and that's what we're all about. I, one thing, though, really jumped out like three or four or five times, and I remember talking about this with Ed Pounded back in D ninety, was the importance of professional development. It's so crucial to get it done. I brought, and we'll just pass this around, this is, these are the effect sides of some of the core elements of the evidence-based funding formula, and predicated on the research for the EDF, to be statistically significant, to have that correlation that you knew it actually had a meaningful relationship with enhancing student achievement over time. The coefficient had to be point two five. If you look at the coefficient for professional development from the evidence-based model, it jumps. It jumps off the chart. You do that right, you're empowering your extant faculty to really be part of that systems change, and that's what you need. So I think it highlighted the importance of professional development. It was repeated four or five times in here, and it really corresponds with the research in this area, which I thought was powerful. And the only other thing I want to say, and then I want to shut up, is what I liked about the article that Jack and I saw in the New York Times, it's, I think it makes it very real how pervasive negative attitudes toward African-Americans is in society, and what a person who's African-American faces that someone who's not African-American doesn't. And I think that's something to keep in mind as we walk through this process, and I think it reinforces the importance of professional development, I'm implicit bias in those things. It's very easy for someone who looks like me to not relate to this, because eight times a week, I'm not facing this kind of bigotry, and nine times a week, I'm not facing that kind of bigotry. But all our African-American kids are consistently. So we just have to remember that, and remember that that's why these things are embedded in our system, and we have to do that hard work of changing the system, and it brings me back to the PDPs. So I think it's tied in well.
I was taking a peek at this, the subhead of the New York Times story, that link, that maybe is the only two that says, "An insidious stream of bigotry." So insidious is, you know, because it's, it's like the air we breathe, right? You just don't even realize it. I certainly don't realize it's this same white guy thing going on here. But since I'm chatting, I'll just chat about chapter eleven here of Excellence Through Equity, Five Principles of Courageous Leadership, to guide achievement for every student. And I'll post this in some of my social media channels, just so people know what we're talking about, so they can read it as well. But the thing that, I have several different spots, but one was the reference to the expanding their initiative to grades seven through eleven, because they started at one point, was it nine and ten, or just ten, and branching out. And just hearing earlier tonight about the cell phone, I think the idea of cell phones, the continuum of students that come here, and the importance of creating a pipeline consistency, building on past progress. And so that, to me, is so important, that I realize that we're doing this, you know, but it's not in a vacuum. And so I know that that's not something either that can happen, but that I think is so important is just to do as much as we can across the community to prep the students before they come here. So that's one of the things that stood out to me, and everything that Ralph said also remains very true. So, and, you know, there's some compelling data. There's one thing that I noticed was this number of students that got, were AP coefficient, and it went from somewhere in the sixties to somewhere in the eighties, I think. So, you know, that was like, wow, okay. And it didn't take forever to happen either. So I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Excuse me, discreetly, one of the things, I hope you had it on my phone, one of the things that I was encouraged by is the fact that out of their, the task force's final report, we're doing pretty much all of the things that are being recommended. So I think that's very encouraging. I think the last piece of it is the heterogeneous classes, which I think is what we're going to be moving towards next year. So that's affirmative.
I was going around it. You know, you kind of gave us the early kind of signal that chapter eleven, and you didn't let me down, okay? So I want you to, because I thought this one felt like home. You know, in terms of having just a lot of the things we've been doing, the demographics, et cetera, but it also then points out as well, as if where does the emphasis need to be? You know, I just want to kind of touch a couple, you know, one thing that they talk about, interestingly, within two months of implementation, the same parish reported the rigor had increased. I had that kind of, which, I mean, it tells me that no matter how much you...
I had that kind of, which, I mean, it tells me that no matter how much you, you know, talk about it to the community, it's not until you do it that you're going to get the feedback. But that doesn't mean that we can't be assured that what we have is going to wallop. So I think, you know, it's that quickly. You know, the emphasis on professional development is there. You know, the thing that I'm left with is, this was, it's been a decade or more. And so I would love to know what is going on there today. Yeah, I think understanding what's material, you know, where are things today? Because I think, you know, Ralph, you said it, it is about a long-term journey. And many of these things are about what happened a year, and there's data that supports it. But I would love to know 2020 Abington and get a handle on that. So I'll yield. I can get you that data.
Oh, and a field trip.
But I, I mean, data and experience. And I can get you the data. Okay.
I think it, a couple things. One, you know, it was nice to see, it was nice to read an example that felt a little bit like home, and it felt like these are the things that we're doing. That, that felt good, but to me, that's fine. But I can find lots of examples that could prove lots of different points. But there's a couple things in here that I don't want to, I don't want us to miss from my perspective. And it's not, they're doing the right steps or doing the same kind of steps. One of them was very clearly, a commitment and failure was not an option. That's a culture change driven by the culture, starting with the administration, in this case, supported by the Board, and made infectious across the teachers and the organization and the parents in time. That makes it happen. We could do all these steps and fail, right? I hope that's not the case, but if we don't change the culture, we can't row a square boat against the current. So we have to change the culture, and that's really critical. And part of doing that to me, you know, getting back to that, you know, the engineering me, so they measured how they were doing. They, it wasn't like, we think we're doing well. It's like, we know, and the first year didn't work. You know, it's like, they wanted it to, and they change it, and failure's not an option. And I know whether I'm, well, how I'm doing. My two cents.
That was five cents, though.
Sorry.
No, that was good.
It's a nickel.
Well, this, I, like I said, this was a chapter that I hoped folks would see some of them, you know, from a demographic perspective, but also see the, while we have these elements and we have these resources, as I said earlier, the courageous leadership part and the ability to believe and know, which is quoted here, "Failure is Not an Option," which is an Alan Blankside book. And his quote is, "One aspect of building internal capacity relates to developing one's ability to reframe or redefine the problem in order to solve it. This generally takes a deeper analysis on the part of the learning community and highly skilled guidance from the leader or leadership team." And I think that that's the component that, as, you know, if you look at that 2003 report, we've had the resources, this has never been an issue there, but how are we focusing by them and being intentional about serving all of our students and understanding that our students that are already successful will become more successful? No one is, there is no zero-sum game. And I just want to tie it into Matt, something that you were saying, and I think the opportunities for partnership, we've talked about, we haven't talked in a while about our Tri-Equity Board, but the data sharing and also having common language around these issues. I just learned a couple of weeks ago, there's one of the elementary schools in Oak Park where the fifth grade team prepares the sixth graders for the kids that are in fifth grade for middle school. And it is a social, emotional, it is learning, it is the, you know, what to expect. And that may be a pilot for, you know, all of the schools. So they do everything from practicing how to open your locker to how do you sit in the cafeteria if you don't know anybody, to changing classes, to executive functioning, and that is a commitment that their team has made. So as we talk about transitions, our kids that are coming from the middle schools very reminiscent of what was talked about with the cell phone policy. How do we get into continuity and how do we partner with our districts? Because the disadvantage we have is that we're not a K-12 district. And so partnership is, you know, is necessary to be able to extend the reach that we're trying to have. The other difference, and it's something that, you know, their goals were so specific about, preparing students to be college and career ready and having markers of, you know, increasing by five percent their, you know, test scores and looking at GPA across classes. And, but what they were calling "college prep," I continue, Greg is looking at me. And Phil Pral, if you were here, would, this would feel familiar to him too. Because the question that I've always asked is, the classes that we call "college prep," are they truly that? If a student exclusively took college prep classes in their tenure at OPRF, would they be college ready? And I think that the work that the team has done under Dr. Pruitt-Adams and Greg Johnson has been to look at curriculum mapping and to revise because there were certain students who weren't getting there by that. So being intentional about what we're saying we're doing as opposed to having the onus be on parents to make decisions about what you need to override. No, we have to have a consistent system that addresses the needs of all of our students. So that was very resonant for me. And just one last thing, and it has to do with the issue of race and what was brought out in this article, and there's a quote, and I'm going to misquote it, so it's just a paraphrase. And it talks about students, African-American students going to school every day is an act of courage because of issue of racism. And the things that were described there, I think we have to, as we're talking about professional development and our racial equity policy, understanding that some of the narratives that we've been hearing about wiring down curriculum or students of color not being prepared, looking at how race impacts a student's ability, racism impacts a student's ability to learn or to feel that they belong in a situation is a part of all of this learning. And so I think our professional development is key, our communication to our community, the work that our students talked about today, all of those elements, to me, that is what looking at this work through racial equity lens really means, is that we're always focused on all aspects, and the ultimate result is failure's not an option and that we are truly looking to have all of our kids be college and career ready and putting the time in to do that. So, and I, you know, I think one of the things that we should consider is how we brought this discussion to include our feeder districts and our, you know, broader community in a way that allows for some dialogue. And maybe we can talk to our students about how they're pushing it because they seem to be learning a lot.
Yeah, so part of the idea behind the Tri-Board Equity Committee was trying to overcome the fact that we weren't a unit district. And initially, you know, the effort came out of D90, but it really needs to be led by D200 because we're the district where it all ends up. So I think if we could find a way to breathe some life into that from the D200 standpoint with a couple of real actionable items that could be done, I mean, even this, this course that's being designed by our kids, having that somehow brought to D90, D97, in a, in a way to expose the students there to that might be a really good thing. There's a number of other ways. I think rethinking the leadership role of D200 in the Tri-Board Equity Committee would be great. And maybe reconvening the three districts to talk about ways to do a better job of collaborating and act as much of the unit district as we can without being a unit district would be great on that. I completely agree on the college prep stuff. I've had two different students here who've had very different academic experiences taking very different courses, and I will tell you, some of those college prep courses would not prepare a kid for college. So that's a fair comment, which is why I'm thrilled that you're undertaking this curriculum review. It's the right thing. I know it's a hard thing and it's a long-term thing, but you're doing the right thing. And we need to bump up the rigor there. I think that that's crucial, and certainly the kids can handle it. It just needs to be presented in a better way, which gets to the professional development. One-off professional development doesn't work. It's got to be multiple times a year, it's got to get embedded in the classroom, we've got to have faculty leaders, and it all has to be evidence-based. I mean, and that's what all the research says. And then you get your, then you get that huge effect size on student achievement out of it, and that's what we're looking for. So I really think having a coherent plan on professional development, on implicit bias and on pedagogy, to go, to incorporate more, not just project-based, but UDL in what we do, because those have been the two approaches to pedagogy that have been shown to completely eliminate performance gaps by students based on race and income, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's the way to go, and I would love to see, you know, the administration's recommendations on that. I mean, we, you know, that's for you guys to figure out which are the best ones, but I think that's the way to go. But Jack, everything you said, I completely agree with.
Well, did I feel so good?
That's, that's what you have to do.
Yep.
And Craig, you're right to focus on the, you know, the Board's main role in this. We're not the educators. It's just to set the direction and the expectation that failure is not an option. So you're right to focus in on that, and that's our job, and then monitor the administration's performance. You know, are we getting where we need to go? Is the implementation faithful? If not, what changes of course does the administration recommend that we could actually get to where we want to go and stay on it?
So I think with that, it leads into a discussion that we attempted to have last month or a month before about the Board in terms of our goals and some outcomes that we're looking at. And I think that, I know this has helped me to refine how we can look at those. So I'll get with Dr. Pruitt-Adams that we can think about how we can continue that conversation in light of, you know, more, from a more foreign perspective on our parts. Well, thank you all. To be continued.
Now I turn it back over to you. Oh, actually, I'm sorry.
Okay, we are at our action items, and I will move to approve the certification of mid-year graduates, and ask for a second.
Second. Give it to Craig.
No.
Mr. Martieri.
Yes.
Is here, Dr., Mr. Kowski.
Yes.
Ms. Bythe.
Yes.
Mr. Barron.
Yes.
Mr. Eisley.
Yes.
And Dr. Moore.
Yes. And now we'll move to approve the settlement agreements for specialized instruction facility identification, and ask for a second.
Both at the same time, wait.
It's actually just, yeah.
It's just one.
Right.
Mr. Eisley.
I'm sorry, I did, I'm going to mistake. Familiar with some of the people involved.
Mr. Barron.
Yes.
Mr. Martieri.
Yes.
Mr. Kowski.
Yes.
Ms. Bythe.
Yes.
And Dr. Moore.
Yes. Okay, and we have no student discipline for your reading pleasure or information items on the summer school budget and teacher classroom technology and racial planning update, which we discussed during the Cal meeting. And we are at future agenda items.
I have one. I do. Both you and Mr. Martieri cleaned it for me. There is a need to have a conversation about the Tri-Equity process, only because we've kind of taken the lead this year on some things. We've put in a strategic plan, but I know that myself and my colleagues at 90 and 97 would love just some clarification about our role. There's some things we would love to do, but we're historically under the impression that it was really kind of being led by the members of the Board. And so I would really like to have that as a future agenda.
That's great, but I do, a quick comment for someone who used to be on that. The whole thing, we would love leadership coming from our superintendents, and we'd take whatever suggestions they had and try to implement. Wearing my old hat.
So, yes, and I think that feeds into the discussion of Gelsenau linked to talk about town hall policies. So this may be a way to.
Good idea.
Thank you. To do that, we're kind of doing two things at once. So maybe we can think about how we get the leadership of, Board leadership of 97 and 98 and talk about how we can do that. Any other burning topics beyond the very... Okay. So entertain a motion for adjournment.
Subtle.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.